Okay, we are going to go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you didn't do much last week. Do you have any personal reports received in five?
Yes, I have the collector's October two thousand and twenty-four fees and I have the treasurer's October reconciliation report.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner committing liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
The whole building's general membership meeting tonight. There's always change in the district. We'll be tomorrow, J.C. Rep. Board meeting tomorrow. And another meeting tomorrow after manual. We need to buy the capital improvement sales back. We've got a political and economic responsibility committee meeting Monday afternoon for the board of Realtors. I think that's about it.
Tomorrow morning, City Public Works Committee meeting. And tomorrow, late afternoon, City Planning and Zoning meeting.
Yeah, I've got the Public Works meeting down. And then at eleven AM, I'm on the homeless task force, so we're going to have our second meeting. Friday is the Chamber Leadership Forum. And then Sunday, we will be at the West Bay Historical Society, Hope Station. Sorry, not Cool County. And as if, any commission comments? Okay, bids and contracts. Bid award for Apache Flat Sediment Removal Project two thousand and twenty-four dash two oh two dash one.
Okay, Matt's out of the office at Trinity today, so I'm filling in. We did, so this is an ARPA project, the first one going to bid. We have others, as I explained maybe a couple months back. We're running into a lot of regulatory issues with the Corps of Engineers. Not issues, but it takes time to get through some of those processes. And in these particular projects that we're working on and finding solutions for some of the stormwater issues out in Apache Flats, the Westview Drive area, tends to take a lot of time through the permitting process, through the Corps of Engineers. So with those projects, going to drag into next year easily. We have other projects in waiting, as I've been working with Debbie in explaining. We have other projects, two out for bid right now and another one coming soon. But this is actually one that was planned through the ARPA process. It's removal of sediment in the creek along in Apache Flats, basically from Ravenwood Drive, the private subdivision to the Box Culver under Business Fifty. So engineer's estimate was sixty thousand dollars. Bids came in with the low bid at fifty thousand, Sand Gaines Construction. And we recommend award of that project to them. Questions?
Matt sent that to us last week, so. All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the contract for the Apache Flat Sediment Removal with Sand Gaines Construction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, signing of Russellville Law Enforcement Services agreement.
This is that same contract that we had signed previously. It has an agenda of animal control ordinance. The animal control ordinance, however, won't go into effect until January one. This will go into effect as of today, if you guys consider me signed.
So this we had already.
Yes, it was already approved once and he canceled it. We reworded it and signed it and agreed to it again.
But the animal ordinance or animal control portion of it is effective January one?
Yes, it's in there. The leash law, they wanted to start a leash law in Russellville.
Okay.
This pretty much mirrors St. Martin's, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I'll make a motion to sign the agreement for law enforcement services with the city of Russellville.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
I ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, delivery of audit period proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-five.
Wow, it wasn't expecting such a big crowd. I promise Sam, I'd keep it really short, so anyway. And I do, this will be a short presentation. By law, my, the budget officer recommends budget has to be done by November fifteenth, so it is November thirteenth, so we're good to go there. Just hit on some highlights. You all got your copies. I've got boxes of them in my office. I know a lot of you get a copy of the budget. I'll put them in your mailboxes. They're here sometime later today or whatever, but anyway, so. But today, just hit on the highlights. Of course, we'll have our budget hearings coming up where we go through all the detail, so. But to hit the highlights, the budget for this year of total resources are one hundred and twenty-two point four million. About half of that is carried out, though. We're still carrying over a pretty substantial amount of like ARPA funds and other capital improvement funds and just money that, some general fund money that's been accumulating. But I know there's some plans to spend a good chunks of that money at least next year with the new, at least starting with the new Pranger Center. The, I think we got quite a few public works projects starting up. So, so in that budget, about sixty-two million is the new revenue, revenue that's planned to come in next year out of that one hundred and twenty-two million. Out of that one hundred and twenty-two million, we're recommending to appropriate about ninety point four million on spending and so ending reserve plan to be about thirty-two million at the end of next year. Of that ninety point four million, about thirty-one and a half million is budget for capital outlay. That's a much bigger number than we've had in the past because I put, I put, well, I'll just say I put twelve million dollars in there for the new Pranger Center. Now I know that that's just a tentative number. There's, you're still working on, on the details with the, with the architect, but that's the amount I've put in to appropriate for that next year. And the remaining capital is mostly public works projects and some other, some other smaller projects. For COLA, for employees, I was starting with a three percent COLA. Then what I decided to do, we haven't done this in a while. Apparently, we've done it in the past, but I'm recommending that be divvied up as a five hundred dollars per employee and a two and a half percent on top of that. And that computes to the total of about three percent of across the. Two point two percent, yeah, two, two point two percent. So that's my recommendation for COLA. In my budget, I've included very few additional adjustments that different departments have asked for on top of the COLA. Just in the past, that's kind of gone through. That'll get discussed in all the individual budget hearings. And then in the last year or so, it's been, the adjustments have been working more closely with Sheila as far as, you know, getting comparable salaries and that kind of thing before you make a final decision on those things. So, so these numbers do not include most of the department's requested adjustments on top of the COLA. And I guess my, let's see what else. Oh, yeah, just quick reiteration of how health insurance now, it was approved that employees would start contributing a small amount toward their, toward their individual, toward their health insurance coverage. But we will, we will continue to cover hundred percent of loggers and SERF. So I still think our, our employee benefit package is very, very, very good compared to, you know, state and city and other, other entities that we compete with, so. That's about all I wanted to hit on the highlights. I do want to throw out a word of caution as far as, I think we need to, all the influx of cash we got from ARPA stimulus money, that's pretty much done. That's leveling off. We, no one knew when COVID hit what was going to happen to overall revenues, but it, it really shot our sales tax up for, for a couple of years. That's leveling off. Just a word of warning to commission and every department that we're, we, I, we got to start being, not, we should always obviously be careful with our spending. I mean, you know, you want to, you want to run, always want to run your government as efficient and effectively as you can, efficiently as you can. But there's not a lot of new money coming in these days, so. And as we go through the individual budgets, you know, we can get down into more detail, but the, in the general fund, my first two budgets, the new revenue coming in was, was higher. I won't say a lot higher, but it was certainly higher than our budgeted operating expenses. That number's getting real close next year. And that's not including all, any of the additional raises and adjustments that, that some of the departments are asking for. So our general fund budget, the revenues and plan, the new revenues coming in and the planned operating expenditures are getting pretty close. I know lots of things are going up a lot, and costs, IT costs have gone up a lot. Insurance gone up a lot. Benefits, you know, the loggers percentage keeps going up. We cover hundred percent of that. That's, that goes up every year. It's gone up quite a bit actually the last couple of years. So, and everything just costs more overall, so. So we're still in good financial shape, but just want to throw that word of caution out that things probably need to start getting tightened up a little bit in our budgeting overall.
We're frugal, we're going to be frugal in two thousand and twenty-five.
And I just want to confirm the COLA was at two point two?
Two point two plus five hundred, yeah, yeah. That's my recommended COLA.
Hey, Mark, on page IV.
Yes?
So the ending reserve, two thousand and twenty-four budget column.
Yeah.
What's, why is it different than the beginning reserve from the two thousand and twenty-five budget? I mean, that jives with what's going to be the ending.
Oh, that's budget, that's strictly off the budget. I carry forward last year's budget. The, the thing with that ending reserve, it's, it's usually always going to be lower because, because we don't spend all the ARPA money, even though it's budgeted in there, to spend it all. The ARPA money doesn't get carried forward to, to ending reserves.
So right now, that's carried into the beginning reserve because we haven't spent it down?
Yeah, yeah. We budget, we budget to spend out the ARPA money, some of the other smaller funds. Get, just the way we've done the budget, we don't do contingency appropriations for all the funds. We do it for the big funds, but we don't do it for all the funds. And then for the last couple of years, we've been putting, I've been putting in a five million dollar just kind of number for capital and general fund, but that hasn't been spent. So that's, that's going to be part of the difference too. Yeah, good question, but. That two thousand and twenty-four line just comes straight off of last year's budget, but it's.
Yeah, that's all, I was just looking at that.
Yeah, when I do my new budget, I, you know, I look at what's there as best as I can, project what's going to be carried forward as best as I can. It's not going, it's not going to match up to last year's budget, yeah. It probably never has, yeah.
Well, the one with the auditors hat, he might have tougher questions for you.
No?
I'm saving them for the hearings, budget hearings, which begin, which begin.
The third and fourth.
Third and fourth of December, yeah. So we got a few more weeks, last three weeks. Oh, and just throw this out, just, when did this decision come down? Yesterday on the marijuana tax?
Eastern.
Well, that was the eastern district. So far, it's not going to apply to us until the western district comes down.
Oh, gotcha, oh, okay.
There's a case in the western district court that appeals right now.
Oh, okay.
And they could come up with something different, but in the meantime, we probably shouldn't spend any of that money, I would just say.
Well, we spent, we haven't spent much. We spent the, that news X-ray machine, the security machine over at the courthouse. We've got some money in cupboard for Pranger radios, twenty thousand. We put in to cover the rest of this year, here a part-time employee that the county agreed to. That's about sixty-five hundred dollars, I think, we put in. But yeah, we haven't spent much.
Do we have to pay that back?
Probably not, because in order, in order for those retailers to get that money back, they have to turn around and give it to the customer. They didn't pay it, they, they collected it and remitted it.
So what if the customer has his receipt? Somebody would do that with the gas tax. You can turn that all in at the end of the year, well, middle of the year.
Do you keep your marijuana receipts?
I ain't been speechless in a long time. I don't even have a funny answer for that.
It's not going to be retroactive.
Okay, that, that was a simple answer too, but yeah.
I like my question better.
Unless they're slipped in with my gas tax receipts, I don't know.
They probably all went up in smoke.
Man, I got to work on my gun backs on that one. I had nothing. Too much coffee. Okay, well, thank you.
Uh, follow up on that, in the two thousand and twenty-five budget, I've actually, I plan on creating a number of new, well, not new funds, but. Separating them out, like the marijuana tax, I'm going to put in a separate fund, make it easier to come for. Opioid, the nine one one fee, I'm putting that in separate budgets. Some of the, some of your funds that were kind of mixed in here. We'd account for them separately, but at least budgeting, I'm going to, going to split.
Gives me more an accurate representation of what my budget is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So there, you'll see some new funds, including the marijuana sales tax fund will be a new fund planned to create in two thousand and twenty-five. So there'll be a separate budget for that on page, that's on page forty-six, so. So now, especially now, given that ruling, I think it's absolutely a good idea to put, take that money out in a separate fund, put it in a separate fund, so. And Debbie just wondered, I talked about the general fund being tight, well, it's all the funds, you know, law enforcement fund, road bridge fund, it's all, all, all the, all the big funds are, you know, we're, the budget's going to be tight on, on all of them, so. Any other questions?
Nope, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Is that short enough, Sam?
Yeah, I.
A little long, sorry.
Yeah, a little.
Well, there's our questions.
Thank you, sir.
So again, make sure you make your budget hearings on the third and the fourth at those scheduled times. You have plenty of time to review.
I set that schedule out to everybody. If anybody thinks they need, most of the small budgets go real quick, but if anybody thinks they need a little more time, they'll vote out alive. Let me know, we can, we can adjust the schedule, so.
Okay. Cool County Health Department's open for discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As part of our WIC marketing and outreach budget, we usually try to do something different every few years. I think last year, we tried to bust ads to try to advertise WIC services because as you know, clients don't have to seek WIC services in their client, in their county of residence. We can serve anyone for WIC because it is a federal and state program. So this year, we decided to kind of go back and revisit the billboard issue. We had a billboard, it used to be on fifty-four coming into Jefferson City. It was actually located in Callaway County, but before you cross the bridge, and it was two cute little babies with onesies that say, "I eat at mom's," you know, and it advertised our WIC program. So this year, Melinda contacted Lamar and they have one on fifty east coming into Jefferson City. I think it's around the Stewart area, you know, and it's in Cole County.
Right before Eastland, yeah.
On the eastern end, so same, we get to see it all the time if you come that way. So we would like to go ahead and get that billboard for, to advertise WIC services. And I have a contract here to sign, but if you have any questions. And then WIC, Melinda's still working on WIC, WIC's have to develop the artwork for that. And Lamar's really good about helping with that.
This comes out of WIC's funding, so if no.
Yep, no county funds will be expended for this billboard. And it's under the contract, it's like seventy-nine, sixty-five, so. Any questions? Okay, I brought, I brought the expert. If you have hard questions, this is your chance.
Just put me on there.
Yeah, Brian's side here.
We're going to text him right before our closed session, since he's part of that.
That's the WIC department, right?
Yeah, WIC program.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the contract with Lamar for the WIC advertising billboard.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, parental leave policy.
So I'm the one that brought this up again. I feel like, you know, that was discussed in March. You guys talked about implementing the policy in January. And then for the time being, a care leave policy was implemented. But I think that inadvertently, there was kind of a donut hole created where some people didn't qualify for any of it. You know, the care leave policy said you had, if you qualified for FMLA, you couldn't get care leave. But my limited understanding of FMLA is it kind of secures your job, but it doesn't pay you. So we still have these parents that might go into a leave no pay situation, which none of us wants to have our employees do that. It's not good for us, it's not good for the, for the county. So I think that, and then I, I think we needed some clarification about that. And then I heard that there is a short-term disability discussion that starts January one. So does that mean the parental leave policy won't be implemented? Is that a substitute?
Yes.
Okay, so for those people that, I think that we need some clarification and I, I mean, JT or she.
Just hold until January.
Yeah, she has T section scheduled for this week. So unfortunately, she's in this.
On Friday?
On Friday, yeah. So she's in this donut hole where she, she's not going to have coverage for her parental leave. And I guess I'm, I'm here to appeal and see if there's something that we can do to, to correct this issue.
Yes.
The only thing I would caution you on is that we have, as chairman of the Care Leave Committee, we have denied coverage for two people already that have applied for care leave because they qualified for FMLA.
Did they, did they make an appeal?
I don't, I don't know. The appeal would go to commission, the appeal did not come to care leave.
We had talked about one, another option in that I think she has enough vacation and sick time for maybe a couple of weeks, so she uses that. And then we have her work from home, doing Joe's work.
I also had another question. Can staff donate their sick time to cover hers? Because I have over seven hundred hours, I would donate some of my time to cover hers. And I know that other staff.
I don't think we did department to department, and I brought this up at some point too. And the reasoning was that some departments have seventy people in them, some of them have two. So it's not really fair to just say, okay, we're going to do it for our department. And that, I guess we could change that if we wanted to, but I think the reasoning, it was a good reason not to do it that way. I see where you're coming from.
So if, okay, so she's going to deliver on Friday. It's imminent, it's going to happen. So if she's still in maternity, parental leave, January one, when short-term disability kicks in, does she qualify for that then?
She has to be actively working on one one to qualify for the new short term. So has there been other individuals? Yes, there's been quite a few individuals that have requested and had FMLA, but there was nothing available. They left without pay. Their insurance was still covered because they were qualified for FMLA. So we covered their insurance while they were off, but they went with leave without pay. So that was, those two individuals that he was talking about, plus others.
You, you use the term, they, they went, they left. They didn't leave, did they?
Well, they took their leave time.
Well, okay, but they didn't leave employment.
Oh, no.
But Jay said.
Well, FMLA's leave without pay, right?
Right.
Well, it depends. You can use all of your time up, right?
Yeah.
You have to use all your time up, and then you can go leave without pay. But we're still paying your health insurance.
Well, I think Jay's understanding was she had to work out a payment plan to pay for her benefits while she was on leave.
For the benefits that are normally deducted from her pay rate, depending.
Depending.
Those things, she does have to pay, continue to pay those.
Okay.
The county paid benefits that are in place now, her health continues while she's on protected leave.
At her retirement, we continue to do that because you're on protected leave. I just say this is a slippery slope. If you do this now, we turned down several people since March. Not only the two from the care leave, but other people that qualified for FMLA too, took leave without pay.
Well, I think that's what Christie was asking for, something to be the little stopgap, but we, I, we wouldn't have to, but I think you would have to make it retroactive for the other three or seven people that have taken leave without pay.
Seven of them, five, I believe it's seven, that we turned down. Even turned down at, at the door saying, sorry, you're not eligible, they just accepted it.
How many secondary caregivers would that be too? I mean, you could.
There would be a lot of the secondary that would come back.
So there's a lot of moving parts to it. And I mean, we've got a lot of great employees. I'd love to help them out and do something like this, but I'm going to vote no on if we try to do this today. But I think this is just the wrong way to do it. It is a slippery slope, so.
During COVID, we had a lot of employees working from home. Would she be able to do health department work from home?
We have some work that she could do from home, yes. I will have to talk about it. We have a lot of policies and ordinances that need to be developed, but I also want her to have her time with her child. You don't get that back.
You, you mentioned must be working on January one, which is, none of us, none of us work on January one. But, but can there be work that meets that requirement, but it's only that, the day needed to qualify and then?
This, what you call accident, or what they call that, happened before, so the clock would already be ticking on that. But as far as Joe said, they have to be here, have to be.
So the instance, so whatever makes them qualify for short-term disability has to happen after January one. So her giving birth on November fifteenth doesn't qualify since the policy doesn't start till one one.
Well, what if you got pregnant on New Year's Eve? It'd be nine months later, that, after that didn't happen until.
Yep, too bad.
September, right?
Too bad, if you break your leg, you know, plow in snow on December thirty-first. You don't qualify for short-term disability, apparently.
Everybody be careful until January first. On the appeal for the, because you're the one basically appealed the, the care leave.
I was just wanting to revisit it, whether, you know, you could put the policy in temporarily. I'm not even asking for six weeks, you know, four weeks, just something to help out the staff, you know. It, and I know that, you know, every department's different. Some departments are, you know, I'm willing to come in here and talk to you about it, you know, whether or not, you know, you want to hear it. But, and also, it takes a long time to hire staff, it takes a long time to train staff. I mean, Jade started, she's had a lot of extenuating. I mean, JT started, she's had a lot of extenuating circumstances, a lot of health issues. She wasn't like, oh, I don't care if I have leave or not, I'm gonna get pregnant. I mean, she could tell her story if you want. But I mean, it takes a year probably to get our staff trained to be able to do the inspections. And she's a great employee, very knowledgeable, and I don't want to lose her and have to start over. That costs the county money too. And that puts extra stress on the other staff when we have to rehire and retrain.
So on the care leave thing, I mean, that to me shouldn't have been used for, for this anyway. But I voted no on it. And we've upheld the recommendation of the Care Leave Committee for other ones that they denied. So I'm, unfortunately, it's not the answer you want to hear. But I'm gonna be a no on it, on that as well today. I don't know if y'all want to further discuss it or not. I mean, wish we had the answer when we got the disability. I thought that was gonna help. We do have a, we've got a gap in there ever since the county's been here. We haven't had a parental leave. So we have addressed it. Unfortunately, some fall through the cracks and, you know, I'm sorry about that. But any other options right now, we have just, I don't think are good options. If you come up with something else, you know, you're willing to entertain the ideas.
So we can't donate our sick leave to her?
I don't know if can't is a.
Okay. Work from home is a possibility?
Yes.
To me, that would be, then she wouldn't have to have FMLA. She would be, and that's, you know, if, if she can, can do that, you know, her hours might be kind of cockeyed with the baby. But I think.
We'll talk about it.
As long as she can, could do that. I mean, somebody's gotta work over there, you know, besides Joe. But. And we, we've got to address for next year. We just, right now.
Like I said, it's a donut hole. We have people that don't qualify for anything.
I'm siding with Jeff on this one.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yep.
Okay. So we don't need to vote. Okay. Assessors' office to present errors and omissions.
We have three errors to look at. We had two splits on properties and the parent parcels received the new residential homes instead of the splits. It was a parent who sold land to his son. Son built the house, but we put the house on the parent property. He doesn't want to pay his son's taxes. So I've already made the corrections in Deb and Hett. We just need to sign these if we can and send new bills for the three properties.
I think I'm good with this.
Yep. I'm good with it. Awesome, thank you very much.
Does this take a motion here to do this?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we usually approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the errors and omission documentation furnished to us by the county assessor on these three properties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Senate Bill one ninety discussion.
All right, we talked about this a few months back. And I think some things have changed. The Callaway County, Callaway County had enacted their ordinance. And then they also put it on the next ballot. It was contingent, I think, upon it passing that ballot. So I was gonna see if y'all would be interested in doing it, doing it that way. I know there's initiative petitions out there that are trying to get signatures and stuff. But I just think we can get ahead of it. And they don't have to go through all the dog and pony show of getting the signatures and stuff. We can put it on there, so.
And in Callaway County, the count was like thirteen thousand something for and two thousand six hundred something against. So, I mean, it passed very convincingly on a November ballot in Callaway County.
I don't know if it changes a whole lot from them getting the signatures and putting it on the ballot in April. Then that's just saying, let's just do it, so.
If we quote, just do it, what is the base year?
You would have, sorry to interrupt, you would have to put that in your ordinance. What's base year?
So if the base year is twenty twenty-five, what is the hurry of doing it today?
We could put, we don't have to actually do it today. If we're gonna put it on the ballot, then we don't have the citizens out there having to get signatures and then bring it to the clerk's office and they all get verified. We can be proactive and say, yeah, we, we agree with this, let's get it on the ballot. And what we can do, just put it on the ballot if you want to. Because I don't think anything's gonna change from us enacting the ordinance today to having it passed in April and then enacting that ordinance after that ballot issue is passed.
Well, do you know of any other counties besides Boone and Callaway that have basically put it on the ballot and then made a, an ordinance?
I've got.
Because I don't, I don't read the statute that they have the authority to do that. You either enact an ordinance or they, the citizens, by their own petition, get it on the ballot. But I don't read the Senate Bill one ninety or seven bill, Senate Bill seven fifty-six, which was the fix, giving the commission, the authority to put it on the ballot and then make their decision after the ballot has been cast.
What gives us authority to put anything on the ballot?
Statutes.
Okay, so if it gives us the authority to put anything on the ballot, this is anything.
We can't put anything on the ballot. It, it, whenever we can put things on the ballot, the statute says so. But that doesn't mean anything.
So we have to have a commission order, even if they do the initiative petition to put it on the ballot? To put it on there? You're just, they're gonna bring it to the clerk and he puts it on there without our order.
Once he certifies the, the sex signatures to be enough, which I think is, is it eighteen hundred or two thousand maybe? It's a percent of, and that may change now that we have another gubernatorial election since, or have had one. But.
So even if they have that, we don't have to have an order to call for an election? That's not the way I understand it. I understand we still have to call for the election.
It's the same as when the citizens had the petition.
Brian, can you come up to the microphone?
Oh, sure. When the citizens were circulating the petition to put the child welfare sales tax or, you know, I'm talking about. And they came in here and spoke and asked you all if you would do it because you had the option to put it on. That particular statute contained the option for both the commission to put it on and the citizens to put it on after collecting sufficient signatures. And the commission declined. And so they went out to gather signatures, but I don't ever believe they collected enough, did they?
I, I had asked one of the people that's on it where they stood. And he didn't, he didn't have the answer. So I don't know how close they are to having, what, eighteen hundred and nine, roughly nineteen hundred.
What are you talking about now? For, you're talking.
For the petition.
Which, which, but I was talking about the, the child sales tax. But are you talking about the, the property tax freeze?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're, that's what we're talking.
And I was just analogizing.
So the lead attorney for Boone County, the, their position was that if a citizen petition could place it on the ballot, which they said would require the commission to pass a commission order calling for the election on the matter. Then it was implied power of the commission to do that same action without a citizen petition. And so that's what I'm going off of. I'm, I'm gonna come from that same position. And I think that it could be argued. And it has been argued probably to death on both sides.
Well, it needs to be explicit. There is no applied, implied. The Missouri Constitution makes clear that the county, counties, other non-charter counties can only take.
This was legislative action and it's very clear. All of it is very clear. Anytime they have any kind of action, it's clear.
Well, I have, I have the, yeah.
That's why we had to, we had to, what was it, seven fifty-sixth and had to come and clean it up some. And there's still questions in it. So I still don't think it's a hundred percent clear.
Well, I have the statute right here. And it says that, that any county authorized to impose a property tax may grant a credit if the county adopts an ordinance authorizing such credit or a petition in support of a referendum on such credit is signed by at least five percent of registered voters of the county voting in the last gubernatorial election. So the two options in the statute are the county passes an ordinance or it goes on the ballot if the citizens collect signatures of at least five percent of the registered voters of the county.
Here is the concern I have with taking action today, making twenty twenty-five the base year. It's confusing. And there are citizens in this county who, citizens in this county who are in a residence. They've been in that residence for a long time. And the value of that residence, per the county assessor, has not changed since he showed up in two thousand and seven. And they would love to not freeze the tax or the value based upon, say, twenty-four. They're really freezing it based upon the value of two thousand and seven. That's, that's so far back, it's not even close. And two of the three gentlemen who were here at the previous meeting are situated in residences that are either equal to or lower than they were in two thousand and seven. So I think there's no hurry to do it if we're making it twenty-five the base year. No one knows, these two gentlemen back here are the closest to knowing what twenty-five year numbers are because they're already working on those. The current assessor has the duty to reassess the county every odd numbered year. So his duty is to still do that for twenty twenty-five, January one, twenty twenty-five. And I would let the assessor do his job, one-one twenty-five. And if we want to enact something, making twenty-five the base year, do it at about that time. The, the assessor who, if he raises anyone's value of over five percent or at all, is it any number?
It's fifteen percent.
Fifteen?
How much? Well, fifteen.
Well, you can't go, is that the limit?
Well, we can go as high as we want. But after fifteen percent, the taxpayer can request an internal inspection.
Okay, but, but doesn't the assessor notify the owner, owner before April fifteenth that your value has gone up?
Yes, we send out impact notices.
We probably can't hear you.
Yeah, we send out.
No, no, we, we can't hear you out in the, if you step to the.
Impact notices are sent out April fifteenth on all properties that have growth, whether it's a reassessment or building permit.
Right, and, and is that a one percent, two percent, whatever it is?
This year it's thirteen percent.
Well, does it have to be thirteen before they're notified? Or do they notify it if it's a five percent?
We notify all taxpayers of any growth.
Of any growth, right, okay. So your office is gonna be sending out a number of notices on April fifteenth, maybe more than it ever has before.
I don't know if it's more than before. Twenty-three, we sent out close to ten thousand. And we'll be, I know, six thousand. We'll probably be close to that as well.
Right.
Yes, I was thinking of.
In twenty-three.
Well, I just, I, I think, I mean, we can wait till, till January one. I, you know, I'm, I'm, we need, we need to act on this one way or another.
So you say wait till January one to enact the ordinance or to put it on the ballot or to enact the ordinance and make a contingent upon it passing in April?
Between now and January one, I, I would still like to see it on the ballot. And, you know, they could set up a couple stations, Black Friday, say at, at Lowe's parking lot or something and just let people, citizens of Cole County who haven't already signed a petition drive through and sign them. They could probably come up with the necessary, you know, signatures that they would need to put on the ballot. So, but I'm.
Well, they could have done that all along. I just wanted to bring it up again.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm.
And just get the ball rolling on it and get some answers for it. You've got valid arguments about the, some people's assessments are incorrect, haven't changed maybe since two thousand and seven. That's not the senior citizen's, taxpayer's fault. That's not their fault. So if we freeze it, and when we freeze it, we're not taking any money from us. We're just freezing theirs at that time. They've been paying property tax for, you know, some of them might have been paying for fifty, sixty, seventy years, hard telling. So I'm just trying to get something going on it. And that was another option was to do it like Callaway County did it. It's been done. You know, I questioned it as well, like you are now. You still question it. It's a science experiment. You're wanting to keep seeing if we can do the same thing and come up with the same answer or not. You know, somebody might have a lawsuit against it at some point and it may clarify it for us. But I'm willing to stand on the same, same thing that, the concept that Boone County was. And put it on the ballot and get it done. But you're saying wait till January one?
Well, I would like to have it on the ballot. If not, then I would say, you know, the first of January, we enact the ordinance. Because it's, we just need to take action.
Subject to passage or if it's a valid issue. Some counties create an ordinance prior to the valid issue.
That would be what Callaway did.
That would go into place if it passes.
But Larry, that wasn't legal.
Yeah, it's your opinion.
That's what the statute says.
That's your opinion. I got another attorney that read the same thing, Jill, and came up with a different answer. So, and it's.
If nothing else, we can just enact it.
Yes.
Yes.
If you just want to do an ordinance, Sam, just do an ordinance.
Yes, so, so either way, I, I want to proceed, I want to move forward. So, and again, Western Commissioner is correct. Whether we do it today or whether we wait till the first meeting in January and, and do it, I'm, I'm fine either way. But, but in January, I would like to take some kind of action.
I, as the collector, I think it's crucial that we at least do it at the beginning of January because it would take quite some time to implement this. Because it's gonna involve the collector's office, the clerk's office, the recorder's office and the assessor's office. And depending on what you put in the ordinance for how people prove that they're the owner of, that is their primary residence, you know, whether you use, and if it has to be notarized or whether you use deed records to prove that that's their residence. And, and the assessor's office on properties that have farmland and only a portion of that property qualifies for the, for the tax credit would be the house. And you all do one acre with farmland?
We do one acre for.
So the house and one acre would qualify for the credit. The remaining acreage would not. Whether you're gonna include debt service, the blind pension fund is already excluded from it.
So debt service is in the constitution.
Yeah, some counties are including it, some aren't. And I, I don't think you can, as you say, it's in the constitution. So there's a lot of things, a lot of moving pieces to this that will, if you're wanting it to be implemented in twenty twenty-five, that need to be started on as soon as possible.
Here's another little item involved here. If twenty twenty-five is the base year that we've talked about and agreed to, I think, it really only comes into place two years later because there won't be any reassessment in twenty twenty-four unless there's new construction. And new construction doesn't qualify for the freeze. If, if a, if a senior adds a, a room or, you know, makes a bigger house out of it, that doesn't, doesn't qualify as not being subject to tax because it's, it's a different deal. So actually, I'm not suggesting this, but if you, if you don't do it today effective and make twenty-four the year, we've got lots of time to, to, to wait and, and get this thing straight. Folks, folks will be getting notices from the assessor's office on April fifteenth that their values have gone up. When they'll say, well, well, that's no problem for me because I'm sixty-two. Well, it would be a problem for them because twenty-five, if twenty-five is the base year. And, and the other thing about when you, you know, you, you're the guy that's gonna have to do all the work on this. We don't know what that's gonna cost.
Who?
You, the collector.
There's gonna be several people who have to be involved, and it's gonna take some more.
I don't think it changes the assessor's duties at all. The assessor goes out and does his duty, whether we do it now, later, or never. They just keep going out and valuing that property, sending it to you. And then it's gonna be up to you to do the credit and notify every political subdivision, the fire, the library, the Cole County resident. They, you have to tell every school district how much this is gonna cost them. You have to tell them that by November one. And that is massive amount of money for, or work for you to do. And that's the collector's job. And there's nothing in the budget to take care of that. That's, you know, what's this gonna cost is, is unbelievable amount of money.
Well, I'm not gonna argue with about it. Some collector's office aren't dealing with it at all, other than the tax bill. And, and for instance, a clerk in some counties are taking all the applications. I, I haven't, I don't know if I've read the statute lately, but I, I didn't know that there had to be notifications on what it's gonna cost the.
Yeah, I think you have to tell every political subdivision what this is gonna cost them.
I can tell them what it's gonna cost them. Zero dollars. It's freezing it there. It doesn't cost them anything. We're not taking anything from them. So it's zero.
Hey, you have, the, there's a duty that you have to tell the political subdivision.
Yes.
The difference between.
A county granted a tax credit pursuant to this section shall notify each political subdivision within such county of the total credit amount applicable to such political subdivision by no later than November thirtieth of each year.
So you send a letter to the public library.
It says the county, right. It doesn't say the collector.
That's true, Debbie.
Well, it's gonna take the work of several different offices to get this done.
Well, and that's why we need to do it.
So.
As soon as possible, so you do have time.
It's, it's still a freeze.
Sam will send out the letters. You can sign the letters.
Sure.
So what happens if we don't notify them that it's gonna cost them X amount of dollars? I mean, we just got a new judge. We didn't get a letter saying, hey, it's gonna cost you. Y'all gotta have another office and courtroom and parking, and you're gonna have to move some people out.
That'd be a question for the legislature. Call up your state rep and ask him.
Don't you get the legislative notes or something? We're supposed to have some kind of fiscal notes telling us what it's gonna cost us?
Yeah, you know what? The fiscal note on this was, this, on, on Senate Bill one ninety, it was from zero to unknown. And on Senate Bill seven fifty-six, the fiscal note is unknown. Now, how many contracts have you entered into where the cost is unknown or zero to unknown?
It's not a contract. This is, we're freezing this, gonna cost them zero.
We did submit an estimate on one ninety. I don't remember what the total was, but we, it was, I don't know, seven hundred thousand bucks or something like that over a five-year period, I believe.
To administer or?
No, in lost taxes based on the senior population in Cole County.
We have a lot of sixty, sixty-two. Some of them live in apartments. This is only property owners.
And primary residents.
Yes, primary residents, so.
I'm, I'm familiar, really familiar with one block, the block that I live on. Very familiar.
I'm sorry to laugh. I know, I know where you're coming from on this.
There are twenty-seven homes, and thirteen of them are owned by sixty-two-year-olds or older who reside there. Almost fifty percent. Now, maybe that's an outlier of some size, but maybe not. And that, that's, that's a big chunk.
And yours are already, have already been reassessed, so you wouldn't, it wouldn't affect you. Go and get a big freeze.
I, I think, I think there are eight states in the November election that, that did this statewide for the tax freeze. So, I mean, it's.
So I'm gonna try something, and it may die from lack of second again, but I'll try it today. If you wanna wait until a different time, then that's yours. We'll make a motion to pass a commission order calling for the ballot measure on the SB one ninety matter, worded into form outlined in SB seven fifty-six. Shall the county of Cole exempt senior citizens aged sixty-two and older from increases in the property tax liability due on such senior citizens' primary residence? And also call for an election to be held on Tuesday, November first, two thousand and twenty-five for the purpose of submitting to the voters the proposed ballot measure.
November first?
April first.
Oh, you said November first.
I'm sorry.
So you, you want to initiate, initiate that today?
Yeah. I know you mentioned about doing it later on, so. Just wanted to bring it up again.
It dies for a lack of a second, but I would like to, to enact this or I would like to do something at the very beginning of next year. If, if, um, if they can set up some, some state, drive-by stations where people can drive by.
I don't think it's a problem of them getting the, the signature, Sam.
I would like to see it on the ballot, but if not, I'm ready to enact an ordinance. So, the beginning of next year. Yes.
I would also like to mention that it's probably gonna require at least one additional employee. I did not put that in my budget. Mark and I talked about it. I don't know if anybody else thinks they're gonna need an additional employee to, to implement this, but just want y'all to keep that in mind when budget time rolls around. And none of this is calculated or has been figured into the twenty twenty-five budget yet.
I've heard of counties saying they're gonna ask for two or more FTEs.
That's ridiculous. The, if you look at the applications, a lot of them are using, I've gotten several of them. I've seen, there, there's not that much to them. I'll sit at my damn desk and I'll go through every one of them, right here. Got it on point. I will sit there and go through every one of the applications. Y'all tell me what needs, I'll go through the application. Now, the rest of them.
I've heard from other camps.
The rest of the work. The rest of the work. I don't care, I'll work from home and do it. You know, we've got people doing that, we're gonna have to do anyway.
When you're working from home and doing this, Jeff, or wherever, how do you know they're the owner of that property?
We'll have to go through the proper procedures.
We, who's we?
Okay, I will go through the proper procedure once we have them, the policies written up and approved. We're not the first ones to do this. We're, there's a significant list of people that are doing it. I've seen the applications. They're not anything crazy. You will have to go in and verify stuff, yes. But it's, it's not the big deal that everybody's making out of it.
It will be.
How many employees do we have? We've added people left and right. You're telling me that we can't get this to happen? So if we're not, if we're not gonna be able to do this, then we shouldn't be able to do anything else, I guess.
You died for a lack of a second.
Oh, man.
And I, I, I do wanna move forward with this and, and one way or another. I think in January.
Then do we tell the people that January first, we may revisit it? Or tell them to keep getting their signatures and it's, we're gonna wait till April? Or what is the final filing date? Is it a month ahead of time or is it what?
I don't know, you'll have to ask.
You know that right off hand, Don?
I think it's more.
When they have to have the signatures?
I would still, I would still pursue getting signatures. And, you know, I, I think they're really close. And, and, you know, I would be the fairest to have the citizens of Cole County vote for it. But if not, then I would, I would be prepared to enact the ordinance.
Alrighty, I died.
Okay. And a discussion.
Oh, now the easy stuff.
Okay. Discussion of cleaning for new EMS building. Achieve it.
Morning.
Good morning.
Jessica had a conflict this morning, so she just asked me to present this. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to go out and put out an RFP for the cleaning of the admin and training spaces of the new building. We've added about seventy-five hundred square feet of office space. The crew quarters will be maintained by the on-duty crews on a daily basis. So we're kinda looking for either a weekly or bi-weekly cleaning of the spots that don't get that sort of attention. So we'd just like to put out an RFP to do that. Just need your permission. If it comes back outrageous and not feasible, then we can have that discussion at that time.
And this would come out of your budget?
Yes.
So the overnight area where the folks, you know, work these twenty-four-hour back-to-back shifts, that area will be maintained, cleaned by those people there?
Correct.
And does that take care of their big kitchen area too? Okay. So it's just the offices?
The offices and then the downstairs.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
So it would be, the scope of work basically would be coming in, doing floors, wiping things down.
Dusting, wiping, restrooms, trash, that sort of stuff.
Y'all do that every day?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, maybe some of the less traveled areas, like some of the restroom trash and that sort of stuff.
Got your own dumpster there?
Yes.
Yes, we did, we did that last week.
Oh, we did? Must have slept through that one.
So I think we just need permission to run the RFP and then we can have the conversation about budget and.
Who does it at your building now?
We don't have anybody.
Y'all do it over there at EMS building?
Correct. But significantly smaller space.
So do we need somebody over there and here?
Uh, no.
Because you're not gonna have too many people over there, so you may have less traffic. But at the same time, you're gonna have a lot of stuff, mainly the ambulances and.
Yeah, the two crews that are on duty there clean that administrative area and the station area over there. It's basically one hallway, two offices and a bathroom over there. It's on a very.
So the garage, the garage is everything you, you take.
Yeah, I'm willing to take a look at it. Doesn't sound like that much, but we do that at Public Works, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so make sure they bid it too, because I think we've been real happy with them.
I, I think that was, that was kind of the goal, is to get kind of the, some of the known players that we've, we've dealt with. But I think your cleaning is on a little bit different scale than hopefully what our cleaning will be, so.
What are you saying, Eric?
I'm just saying that they deal with a lot of dirt and mud and other sorts of environmental substances. All right, all right, thank you.
Run.
All right, appreciate it.
Okay. While we breeze through all that, do we have any, in the unfinished process? Yes, ma'am?
This is not unfinished. This is, I have a question. As part of our accreditation, we're working through, you know, we worked on our community health improvement plan based on the community health needs assessment, working on our internal strategic plan. As part of the accreditation requirements, I need to have some commissioner input into that strategic plan. So my question is, would you like me to come and give a presentation about our strategic plan, what our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats are to the entire commission? Or is there one of you that, you know, really loves strategic planning and would just like to sit down with me for a half hour hour and talk about our strategic plan and provide some feedback on those objectives and goals and activities that we have already established?
I would say present it to the commission.
Okay.
I'll be glad to meet with you beforehand. If you just wanna kind of go through it and give us the reader's digest version and we can.
Yeah, and that's what I would do at the commission meeting too, I just.
I mean, I don't wanna break a sunshine or anything, but I'll meet with you ahead of time and kind of be prepared for it.
Okay.
So I'm not.
Maybe we can meet and then I can get on the agenda for later in the year, but we just need to kind of.
Just holler, we'll come by and we can, when you get some time, we can kind of go over it.
Okay.
It's so much easier if we have questions and you're ready for them.
Yes.
And you can address them at the meeting. If it's a dumb question, then you can tell me it's a dumb question, don't ask that in the middle of a meeting, so.
Okay.
Do we have anything else?
Jan snuck in at the end. She was here for the dog ordinance, so.
Couldn't get away from City Hall, sorry.
We, we already signed off on it, so.
Just wanted to say thank you so much for everything you do to help Russellville. We need all the support we can get, and you're, you're always there for us, and we appreciate it. The citizens have been clamoring for more visibility on the sheriff's department and continuing issues with dogs, so.
Well, that's been the biggest issue is the animal control. And we have not had an animal control officer in quite a while now. So we've got somebody and I think they're finally trained.
And she's been very responsive.
Yeah, so I think things have changed in the last six months where we're able to, to do it. So appreciate y'all working with us on it. And I think Sheriff's happy to have his animal control officer back on.
Yeah, we're happy. We have a new, we amended the dog animal at large ordinance and it'll be fully signed and everything tomorrow night. And I'll get that to the sheriff. And, and we discussed, I said, what other ordinances does he need to do his job well? So we do appreciate it.
So we bring Jeff into Russellville, do we have to have leash on it?
Chalk on it, at least. You don't get to control.
You want Harry too?
That'd be another United Way fundraiser. I can see this coming already. It'd be better me tied to the post out front. And the water balloon or the ice balloon that Larry got out of.
I would be very happy, Bill, to announce to the community that the sheriff's department's back under contract and.
I think it's effective January first, right? Is that what we said?
The animal portion of it.
The animal portion.
The deputies, I think, are, are immediate.
I think the contract he told me originally, they'd be effective almost immediately.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so the animal control will be, is, is January one.
But they've always responded to calls. If there's an nine-one-one call, the sheriff responded. It's not that we weren't responding. This just gives us the animal control aspect of it.
And we have, you know, double truck, you know, we've had trouble with people parking in trucks where they shouldn't, whatever. And I do, I have not had any problems with any service we've had from the sheriff, so.
Unless they're having issues too, they shouldn't be calling the city clerk or city council. You need to call nine-one-one, get the report in there. You shouldn't have to be investigating it. You shouldn't be having to follow up on stuff. And that's what the sheriff wants to do, is they wanna take care of it. So you let the citizens know that's who they need to call, not Jan.
Sheriff Willard, I, we've had this conversation, he said, you don't wanna get yourself in the middle. I said, no, I don't, but they continually, they send me emails, they send me videos. They come, come to the office and yell at me. And, and I don't wanna be involved in that. That's not my responsibility. And I don't wanna take that liability on.
Yeah.
So I will continue to push, just call nine-one-one.
Well, we appreciate you.
Well, we appreciate you, thank you.
Do you sign in newspapers after all, Dana? Do we bring them in? Are you signing the newspaper?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I gotta go find you.
Want my signature?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, we have a celebrity.
Make sure it's got the little account number and everything on it.
Yep. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else before we go into closed session? I would entertain a motion.
Pursuant to section six-ten-point-zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Existing or proposed security systems under section six-ten-point-zero-two-one subsection twenty.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sam.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes, thank you.